Good evening, you guys ready? Okay. Evening, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the regular quarter health meeting for Thursday, July eighth, two thousand and twenty-one. We're located in the Old Town Hall, eleven eleven Somerset Avenue. As a reminder, this is a public meeting being video and audio recorded cable broadcast and internet posting on W three W dot Dyson dash mass dot gov and also on YouTube. This is also remote participation Zoom meeting, Zoom meeting number eight two seven four one one two zero seven three five. Zoom meeting passcode two two four nine seven six. Zoom dial in number one nine two nine two zero five six zero nine nine. Is, I don't believe anybody's in the waiting room. We will acknowledge them if we have someone come in. So if anybody would mind, please stand and join us in the pledge allegiance to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. We decided to do inspectors reports first this meeting in case there is a chance or situation arises where someone may have to leave. So that being said, we'll start with the health agent.
Good evening. First off, I will point out that we have those representatives from Papa Squash here. They have, only this week asked to get the pool open and we went into inspection and determined that their flow rate was not up to snuff, so they've asked for a waiver from that requirement on the flow rate. And I felt that obviously the board needed to vote on it and that they should come in tonight to talk about it. Whether we want to talk about it tonight or we want to put it on to another meeting, but it was, they're obviously in a hurry to get the pool open because it is summertime. So I don't know what the board's preference is.
I don't think we can make a formal decision if it's not on the agenda as a variance request.
What did you say about that?
Yeah, I mean, I know I am bringing it up, but I know it was reasonably unanticipated, but.
That's fine, I mean, you know, they're here, we can do, we can go action.
Yeah, we could discuss your inspection and what you saw, but then the variance, I think for the variance itself, we'd have to, I don't know. Make, I don't know if we can make a decision without being.
Yeah, or even if, you know, temporary decision or whatever we want to come to, but let's hear everything. And they submitted a letter to go with the waiver, which I've made a copy for everybody. So I don't know if we want to read it or not, it's a long letter, but effectively their flow rate is not, the water needs to circulate once every eight hours. And they're not at that right now, right now, it's about once every eleven hours. But we're dealing with a pool that is rather old and some of the stuff is set and there's nothing they can do about it.
Besides increasing diameter of the pipe, is there any other way to increase that flow? Does anybody else think of any other?
I think with a bigger pump would be able to move more water through it. I don't know of any other way to get more flow.
It's about breaking the ground and to change that piping, but I'm just trying to think outside the box if there's any other way to circulating that water faster.
If I may.
Yeah.
Well, just come on up. Laura, do we have a microphone for them?
I'll speak to Paul, you might be behind you there. I'm not sure if you want to do that.
Oh. Just have a seat.
The proper protocols, yeah. My name is Leo and I'm actually married to Tiffany, who is the president of Papa Squash right now. Thank you. The, we already increased the piping as much as we can, right? It's only like two skimmers and two returns to the pool is the old, old structure, right? We are in the process to replace the pump with the largest pump available, but what limits us is the filter. Our filter is limited to seventy-five gallons per minute. And even if we increase the piping, increase the pump, we're limited for the, by the filter. There is no bigger filter system that we can, we can purchase and to install there, you know what I mean? We have to move to like a complete commercial setting, which we don't have the means to do it, you know what I mean?
And Todd, how was the water clarity at the time?
So when I was there yesterday, and I, and when I was there, not last year, because we weren't open last year, the day before, the water has been clear. But when I was there yesterday, the water was crystal clear. I went back today to check on the fencing, well, we'll come back to it, but they were running on a generator and the generator was off and the water was cloudy. Not to the point where I couldn't see the bottom of the pool, but it was, the filter, it needs to run, you know, three times a day and then that means it needs to run twenty-four hours a day. And right now they're on a generator because they tore the building down. The building inspector was there with me and he can probably weigh in on some of that better, but.
See, our main goal is to ensure safety at all times. Closure, immediate closure automatically is if the water's not clear. So I guess we're nervous when I even hear once that the water's cloudy because things can happen. And if you're on a generator, who ensures that consistent safety?
I, I, I can't, I would never allow operation of a pool or issue of permit with a run on generator, period, end of story. Unacceptable. You're already, you know, thirty-two percent beyond the flow rate as it is. And now generator runs up, now you're not getting that circulation. Who's to say whoever comes in in the morning, it's cloudy? No, still going to jump in anyway. Go about ten years back and someone died in a pool and fall or ever drowned in a pool and fall or ever and they didn't find the body for a couple of days.
Yeah.
Because it was cloudy. No way. Is there plans to get it put onto actual hard wired electric and off a generator?
We are in the process of that too, but like National Grid is just, we've been dealing with them since like April. I mean, like we have an electrician on board to put like a, a temp panel for us. We are ready to go, we just got the regenerator just to get the pool going to gain some time. And I mean, we never had a violation before, like a health violation in the entire history of the, of the, of the club. So we are well aware, we don't want that to run.
Right, yeah.
I mean, like we understand that safety is the most important part for, I mean, and once we have an issue like that, we have to close out the place for almost forever, you know what I mean? So I'm completely with you. Maybe we'll just try to get to the settlement.
If we issue a permit knowing that this is run on generator, generator can run out of fuel, it can malfunction, whatever the case may be.
It can just be shut off.
That's right, someone can just shut it off. Not only, you know, are you not getting that circulation that you're already exceeding, which, you know, we can reduce the beta load and work with that, but now you're not getting even the eleven point six hour circulation. It, it just, you know, now, now you get into a, you know, potential health hazard as far as bacteria and things like that. But on the clarity end, you know, I mean, if, I just, and then I, I don't know as far as electrical and grounding, things like that, and I'm not an electrician. So, you know, I'd probably refer to, to the building department on that. It just, I, I don't think until it's properly wired into a, an actual panel, I couldn't.
Yeah, and even then, I'd like to see you get, get a little down if you can somehow. You're at eleven point six now, we'll just try to, just make me feel a little better when I see that. Because you know what it is, I have to actually see how the regs are written, because it says it shall be eight, eight, eight hours turnover. I'm not sure.
It's eight.
Yeah, so I don't know if that's the minimum that the state says and we can go less than.
Yeah.
But it does talk about variances. And when I read the variances today, it says that unless you can determine that was manifest in just or, and I'm paraphrasing here, or you, or the applicant has proved that the same degree of protection required under forty-three point, four thirty-five, which is the regulation, can be achieved without strict application. So, meaning if you can get to that same level.
Yes, and just, just so you know too, like their waiver has been issued from, from the town in the past, right? It's because the pool, technically speaking, for that size allows fifty-two people capacity.
Yeah.
I mean, like we never had more than twenty in the past twenty years, I mean, on any given day, because it's somewhat small club. I mean, like it's normally like seven to eight people in the pool, so the, 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 obviously that affects the ratio of the contaminants in the pool for sure. You know what I mean, but the town has been.
Other things affect.
Absolutely.
Water clarity as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
Chemicals.
Yep.
Circulation.
Absolutely.
Obviously, beta, beta load, you're right.
Mm-hmm.
But other things affect it, so we take all that into consideration.
We, we never had a violation before, you know what I mean? So we always, the, the water quality has actually been really good. Generator has been off because we've been talking to the fire department, it's been cleared by them to run a generator, you know what I mean? But I, we haven't run a generator because of that, you know what I mean? But up to, up to then, it was actually pretty clear.
I've never heard of a pool, at least a semi-public pool being allowed to run on a generator.
Yeah.
I, I can't see that. I mean, maybe as an emergency backup when no one's using it and, you know, hurricane comes through just to try to maintain some type of water clarity, you know, for an emergency situation with no bathers in there, but I mean.
Even then, is it loud?
I could hear it when I was there, like walking all the way around, it was, I could hear it, it wasn't so loud, you couldn't have a conversation, but.
Okay, yeah, because I always like, I went, I remember, this is different, but I went to do an inspection one time and the music they were playing was so loud, where I said, if a child was asking for help, can you hear the person? So if you have all that background noise, a generator and all this other stuff, can you physically help, hear someone asking for help? So you have to take everything into consideration, that shouldn't be there anyways, a generator. I'd like to hear what the commissioner has to say regarding the electric.
Yeah, so there, there is an obvious problem with running a pool off a generator. The bigger problem is that the service running from the utility to the property is non-existent, it's gone. I understand that you did that for demolition purposes, but we could have relocated that service to a temporary pole and still had services at the property. Right now, in the absence of a service attached to the utility grid, we have no grounding mechanism at that pool at all. So I sent my electrical inspector out there this afternoon, he verified there is no grounding apparatus at the site. So running it off a generator is not just a problem from a health perspective, it's also a problem from a grounding perspective. So generators run on a floating ground, which actually goes back to the utility for grounding in an emergency, we don't have any of that. As far as working with National Grid and not being able to make any progress, there's no temporary service erected on the site for grid to connect to. You're not going to get anywhere with grid until that happens. So the proper procedure is to have your engineer call my department, have a discussion with my electrical inspector, install what's needed for grid to connect, and then if you get pushed back from grid on the connection, I can facilitate that.
Okay.
But the grounding of the pool is going to come into play, even after you get that connected, we need to make sure that the pool is properly grounded. He did notice today, I know the fence was a big concern, we were out there. The fence is actually closer than the standard allowed by the electrical inspector and the fence would now need to be grounded. So there's a lot of problems with the site and I understand and empathize with you that you're trying to keep this going and you're trying to enjoy it, but I've always said a catastrophe is a culmination of many, many things going bad, we're writing the recipe. And I don't want to see anything happen, none of us want to see anything happen. So I, I encourage the board to leave it status quo, we can't let it run on a generator and we need to do this the right way.
So basically a temporary service full like you would install for new construction.
Correct.
Would be sufficient.
Because it still has a utility ground, there are still grounding mechanisms in place. And as long as the pool is grounded properly and the pump is grounded properly, then the risk of, of, of a problem is, is not, I wouldn't say non-existent, but if something happens and all the safety parameters are in place, it's an accident. Right now, that's not the case, right now somebody could get hurt there.
If, if we were to grant you hold another meeting next week or whatnot and grant a variance to allow you to run off a generator and something happened, whether it be the generator fails and someone drowns in that pool and it's too cloudy and they're not noticed, or they get electrocuted because of poor grounding or lack of grounding, Papa Squash is liable, the town is also liable because we granted a variance and we granted a permit with hazardous conditions. I will not do that. I can't speak for my other two board members, I will not vote for that end of discussion. And I'm sorry, I know you're trying to run it.
No, no, I get it.
But the last thing I want is someone to get seriously injured or die because we.
I think the building commissioner gave you some good direction and then he's willing to facilitate some of that stuff if, once you get that, the remaining work out of the way.
Yeah, basically get a temp service going.
Yeah.
And then if you get pushed back from that National Grid again, contact you then.
I can, I can help with that, yeah.
Sounds good.
And I, I will say if, if you get all these, those issues rectified, I certainly don't mind you guys coming back and, and talking about that flow rate and trying to work something out, it, it's obviously pre-existing, so, you know, knowing it's pre-existing, haven't had really any issues in the past.
Yeah, maybe frequent stops from Todd.
You know, that, that I don't have a problem with, you know, going forward. But I, I think the, the other issues with, with the actual current electrical status is.
Go ahead.
Just move the microphone over for.
I just want to say that we've tried to keep this open for the town, not for us.
That, that's Tiffany, she's, you know.
I understand, and it's, it's been with the town for, I don't know how many years.
And we're not just, we're not trying to obstruct you from doing that. But you know, if you're crying now, how would you cry if somebody got hurt?
Oh, a hundred percent, I, I get it. I just want you to know that we did go to the town to ask for help from the CPC and they wouldn't, they denied us. And we've tried to do fundraising and everything like that to gain the, the funds to do these improvement. Because we did not open last year, it was totally vandalized, the kids are there drinking, you know, ruining things all. So if we walk away, that's what's, someone really is going to get hurt because.
Well, if you walk away, then I'm going to intervene and there won't be a pool there anymore. That's what'll happen.
Okay, because we have mentioned to the town, I'm like, we, we give it to you, we don't know, we don't know what to do and no one really wants to do anything.
I, you know, I don't know if that's the resolution, but if, if, if this is affecting your health, which it looks like it may be.
Oh, no, I just.
Well, yeah, but you seem passionate about it and, you know, I, I, I understand and I, you know, I, I support you any way I can, but if it's a losing battle, maybe it's just time to say, you know what, enough is enough and we'll just move on. Maybe, maybe we can talk about making a park there or some kind of dedicated facility, maybe we can do something like that. Joint effort between the town and, and your entity, but we just can't allow it to go on like this, so.
You said that the structure got demolished, did that include the bathroom facilities as well?
Everything's gone, yeah.
I have a portage.
So you can't, you can't open a pool without a bathroom.
We have a portage on, so.
Oh, yeah, but you know, I know.
We have, we have a wash station as well.
You have a water, like a shower? Because the signage says, it'd be conflicting, the signage says you have to take a cleansing shower.
We have that, we have a shower.
But you'd have to have that, yeah.
We do.
Yeah.
We have a shower and we have.
And toilet facilities and.
The plan was just to demolish building, demolish another building, so this wasn't a permanent, so this was a temporary.
Have given us a gift.
Yeah, I didn't know there was no structure either.
I'm sorry.
I didn't know there was no facility, okay.
Well, that was another problem with the condition of the building, so.
Right, they condemned it because it, you know, was two army barracks.
Yeah, we, Jim and I have been there in the past, well, I used to inspect in the past.
I did an inspection there a few years ago too, the pool and the facility.
So it comes down to basically synthesize this, like if we have a temp drop, ground defense, basically ground, ground.
Yeah, I, I think.
Or we deck and puts in the right path, you think?
Your electrician has to talk with my electrical inspector because we need to make sure that the pool is grounded properly. Some, the building was torn down, we don't know was the ground disrupted, is it even there, we don't know any of this. I think they really need to have that discussion first and figure out what's going to be entailed in order to get the service connected, the pool grounded properly. And then I think maybe you have to have another discussion as to whether or not this is actually tangible or not. And if it's not, then we'll talk about what the next steps are. It doesn't need, need to be the end of the road, it may be the end of the pool, but it might not be the end of the road, so.
Okay.
Okay?
We've just taken money from.
I, I know you, I know you have, but we'll work it out. You didn't take it in malice, you did it in good intent, so.
And for history purposes, I went to Papa Squash before there was a pool and I used to swim in the pond.
Right.
And that's what we did way back then and that was.
Right.
I was probably twelve or thirteen at the time, so that was about sixty years ago. So it's been around a long time, it does have history. If you have a open fundraiser, I think you'd find a lot of people upwards of my age who would be glad to donate.
Yeah, we just don't know how, is it enough, you know?
And for history purposes, my great grandfather, Lefty Stonestrom, was one of the founders.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you have, yeah, you have a connection with him.
Yeah, there's history there.
You know, I mean, the pond is still there, you know, I, I, I'm not trying to sugarcoat, I'm being serious. We, we might be able to hold on to something that was there.
Yeah.
And that was the original watering hole.
There was an old playground, is that still intact?
No, we.
When I went there, it was really old, it was.
No, that's gone, it's gone.
Now, do you run the filter on a timer when, when it's going?
It would have to be on a timer after, which is another reason why the electrician needs to call my electrician, there's a lot, yeah.
We're trying to make you aware of everything that's going to have to happen without any more delays. The pool will have to run on a timer, so you get net sufficient runtime.
And normally we would run the pump all the time.
Well, and that's the problem with only the eleven hour circulation, it has to run twenty-four hours.
Say, we would have to be on continuous.
Yeah, that's what we normally used to do it, I mean, when you had the, the permanent service, obviously the generator, we've been running twenty-four seven, but not, but everybody was, not twenty-four seven, but like most part of the day when somebody was there, I mean, and I had to shut it off.
And who was the certified pool operator there?
Rich Gunter, Richard Gunter.
I just wondered.
And for the record, everything else that I did past inspection.
Gates and everything fences?
Everything else was, was fine. There was one issue that the fence wasn't high enough, but they, they added on to that, so that worked. But I didn't know it didn't meet the electrical code because it was, you know, the distance off the pool, but for the pool code, everything else was fine except for the flow rate, so. And like I say, the pool was clear yesterday, so.
And just to let you know, if you can get these things done quickly, we would be more than happy to hold a special meeting to get this done.
I appreciate that. So, thank you so much, appreciate that.
And yeah, in fact, we went so far as to set up a meeting for Monday night, which was the forty-eight hours, the earliest we could set a meeting up for, because we have to post it forty-eight hours prior. In case the board couldn't vote on it tonight, that we could do a special meeting Monday, so we were trying to.
Too many negatives to.
So if, if it was just the, the, the flow rate, you know, more than happy to, to work, work it out, you know, again, it's pre-existing, you don't have a high population, you know, going in there at any given point in time and, you know, we could certainly work that out, but just it's a matter of life safety and that's something, it's very black and white with me, so.
We appreciate the time you guys.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for coming in.
Hi, very welcome, we'll see what we can do, I guess, right? Thank you.
Tiffany, we can talk on Monday or whatever and we can, you guys can fill us in on where you're, where you're heading, so.
Thank you.
Take care.
Have you got anything else, Todd? What?
Do you have anything else?
I do. What else? We got the thing from Miha to the annual membership renewal, you must have gotten that too?
Yeah, I gotta pay that at some point.
So they're looking for our membership to be renewed, it's a forty dollar membership. This, well, I've been in it every year since I've been here, so it's a matter of.
Yeah, it's good to have, yeah.
Board okay with renewing that?
If you do one seminar with them, it already pays for itself because you get a reduced rate, so.
Yep. So if you guys are okay with that, we'll move forward with that.
Yep. So, if, um, you guys are okay with that, we'll move forward with that. Uh, what else? Uh, oh, um, contact tracing. Oh, no, I guess we'll come back to that when we get to COVID. Never mind. Cause COVID's still on here, right?
Sure.
We'll talk about that. Uh, budget, it was, uh, the end of the year, we had some, some scrambles with some monies that were short here and extra there and trying to move some things around and some invoices that came in after the fact and that kind of thing. So, uh, Tom took care of all the budget transfers to, uh, square some things up. But ultimately, what ended up happening is we were a hundred tons of trash over what we anticipated, cause of course, we did the budget before COVID started, uh, last year, so we were a little high. But if you remember, we did a budget transfer like partway through the year to try and account for it and it turns out, we were a hundred and sixty dollars off for the year on whatever the budget was. Like a million dollars or whatever. We thought we did pretty well, so.
Overall, we were, we gotta move three hundred dollars around.
Oh, is it?
So, we, basically, you know, the, the projections and everything we had based on six months and we projected twelve months, we, it, it actually worked out all right, so.
Trash and recycling is still heavy.
Yes.
Plus these, uh, middle of the year increases that they throw at us, you know, so.
Yeah, and it'll never go down.
No.
But yeah, CARES is behind us. Um, the overtime is now over and so we are back down to, well, the regular hours for both of us. So, it's significantly less hours in the office. We've got a mountains of paper that still needs to be dealt with and we're trying to deal with that, but of course, everything just keeps coming, but we are, we're trying to get caught up. There's always another emergency though.
Recently, we had the emerg- the, uh, information request from Rockland. We had SMRP grant is, is due. So, you know, try to squeeze in what's priority amongst everything else and we'll get there. That's all I can say.
We're getting there, but it's, we still haven't organized the files yet that we've started, what, three years ago now, um, when we got over to this building. And we're getting there, but the last year, we weren't able to do any of it, so. But, um, let's see what else. Yeah, no, I think that's, that's it for now. It's not a lot of perks coming in, not a lot of Title Fives. It's kind of slow and steady at the moment, so we're doing, trying to keep up. Still a lot of stormwater stuff out there. Had some emergency prep things that we've been trying to get a trailer so we can store the PPE in it and stuff, cause the trailer we got, if you look outside, you'll see it's the little one that you can tow behind the truck. Not really big enough to keep everything in it that we need, so we've, um, mostly Jim took the lead on that for, uh, trying to get all that organized so we can get something a little bit more permanent. And that's...
Yeah, it's far the whole...
Yeah, the, they were answering the trailer and that's been sprayed and we took care of that, but, um, yeah, so a lot of that was CARES Act money. Um, and we also had a FEP grant, which were to get the cabinets that the board voted at the last meeting, so. CARES has been very helpful with us getting to where we need to go, but, um, yeah, I think that's all I have for now.
Nice.
Thank you. Commissioner, do you have some, something to add or your own reports? We'd love to hear them.
I'll, uh, I'll just expand on the last comment that Agent Pilling made. Uh, just so the board of health is in the loop, especially in the case of an emergency. We decided to buy a twenty-foot storage container. We are gonna outfor- outfit it, excuse me, with lighting and ventilation so that, uh, it's a, um, safe and conducive environment to store items. We are going to consolidate all of our emergency preparedness items that's scattered throughout the town right now. We have some at the middle school, some here, some at the station. So, the box will be in one central location with the trailer beside it. We're gonna organize the trailer by emergency needs so that in the event of a problem, we can have personnel put the items into the trailer, make it mobile and bring it to wherever, either the shelter or wherever the emergency may be. So, I think it's a good, uh, a good step or progress made, at least on that front. And, um, we'll also be able to inventory everything we have. We have a lot of stuff in a lot of different places.
That's an excellent idea. Good job.
So. Thank you.
Commissioner is, if you didn't know, is also a member of the Emergency Preparedness Committee and instrumental in figuring out what was gonna go where within the, in ordering the necessary interior items.
I can't take all the credit. It's teamwork.
It is, yes.
The intern grabbed the reins. We gave him a lot to do. He did, he rolled with it and, um, I'm looking forward to actually making it happen and...
That's perfect with lighting and everything, because I've gone into trailers, we can't even see what's back there.
Right.
And then, yeah, so it's good.
Yeah.
Very good.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. As no animal spectus, I think we can move on to number four, new business, review, discuss an act to recommend the appointment of special agent Marilyn Edge for tobacco enforcement.
So Seth Baker was our agent last year, but he has taken another job in another state, so he is no longer around. So Marilyn Edge was asked to come back and she's temporarily filling the role. They are trying to hire somebody to be full-time to replace Seth, but as of yet, they don't have anybody. So, right now, we are asking that the board appoint her as a special agent for tobacco enforcement.
If I could though, um, I was watching, uh, our local network and I believe one of the appointments that the selectman made was Seth Baker.
So, they probably just automatically already appointed him.
Yeah, yeah.
They must've, but yeah.
Obviously, he's not gonna sign, but do, do they have to do it as well for her?
Yeah, we're only recommending the appointment to the selectman, so.
I'll make the recommendation.
I'll second.
Motion made in second, I'd recommend Marilyn Edge as tobacco control enforcement officer for the town of Dayton. Any further discussion? Seeing none or a favor?
Aye.
No opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And we're gonna... Item four B, review, discuss an act to schedule a tobacco regulation workshop. I think maybe until such time Marilyn can be with us.
Yeah, Seth was the one that had asked for us to change some rules and we kept kicking it down the road a little bit.
For now?
Yeah, I'd like, I'll make motion to table.
Second.
Okay, motion is made in second, a title, item four B. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to number five, five A, review, discuss an act, use of FEP, P-H-E-P grant funds.
You didn't spell that out.
Just so everyone knows, the acronym of P-H-E-P is Public Health Emergency Preparedness Grant Funds. So, what's the deal with this one?
So, at our last meeting, the, uh, town of Dayton was awarded a four thousand seventeen dollar grant for, there were certain expenses that we could use it for. And we had elected to buy cabinets to keep the PPE in, in, which would then be moved into the trailers that Building Commissioner was just talking about. Uh, the problem was we placed the order in June and they came in, but nobody told us they came in, so the order got canceled. Without us knowing about it, we didn't find out about it until after July first. The money had to be used by June thirtieth. So, we're like, alright, so that means we, the board would have to rescind the vote and change it, but we spoke with MAHB today and they said that it was okay because the intent was there and we have the, the chain of the ordering and everything else that they would allow it to continue. So, we can, so we have to replace the order, but because we have the record of it, that they were okay with it, so.
Yeah.
So, there's no vote needed by the board at this time.
So, they allocated the money already and...
Great.
Yep.
You know, we don't, we don't have to return any money, even if, we can continue to spend as long as it still falls under those parameters.
Yep. So, there's no vote needed at this time.
Excellent. Excellent. Followed through.
Okay.
Whose email do they have this time?
Um, we haven't reordered yet. We will make sure...
Yeah, that just happened a minute before the meeting, so.
Make, make sure there's additional email on that chain.
Ain't gonna be ordering the same things you ordered before.
Yes.
Where'd you order from?
Granger. And I think that would be a circulation. It should be the same order.
Yeah, I think in order to maintain what we said with them, would have to be effectively the exact same stuff.
Fits in the trailer, right?
There was nothing wrong with what we ordered. I'm just astounded that.
Yeah, I think so.
They just returned them.
So strange.
Okay, five C.
Oh, B.
Oh, Schedule Body Out Regulation Workshop. Five B, you're correct.
So, we have a, uh, one body art establishment that is applied in town, um, and since we have never...
Oh, the board has.
Oh, you have it. Uh, so since we've never issued one before, we wanted to make sure the wording on the permit was acceptable to everybody up there. Um, we looked at a couple of other towns, but there didn't seem to be a lot on there, but if that's okay, we can move it along. We've also talked, we don't have any regulations right now and we need some regulations. Uh, we've set up the regulations from the town of Lakeville, uh, as a draft, but we need to have a workshop so we can kick it around and make sure where we're at. So, at this point, we're just looking to schedule a workshop date.
Any ideas?
Go before our meeting?
I printed out my cabinet.
The next meeting?
Well, that's August.
He is gonna be open, um, and he has followed in your recommendation to Lakeville, right, so there's not like a...
But, um, just... But they're not doing the minors parental consent, right? That's, that was my biggest thing. I just wanna...
Not doing what? Oh, minors would...
Consent, yeah. That's my biggest...
So, do you want us to confirm with him?
Yeah, I would just...
No, it's confirmed.
Okay, thank you.
So, is there a day of the week that works better, doesn't work better?
I, uh, I think it's the third. The Thursdays are not good for me.
Third Thursday not good, okay.
Well, I think that the normal night we meet, what are we, second?
Next two Tuesdays and Wednesdays are no good.
Yeah, so we should pick a night.
I have a Tuesday too, that's, I have to look. I think it's July sixteen. It's not...
That would be a Friday.
Sixteen. Let me look. One of these Tuesdays that are coming up, I have that...
Well, Tuesdays I think are right out anyway, right?
Cannabis commission thing?
So, we're looking at a Wednesday or a Thursday night.
Well, then we can flick with other boards on a Wednesday.
I, I can't do next couple of Wednesdays, you guys are...
The Thursday...
Actually, let's do a Sunday morning, no, just kidding.
Laura has dates.
The third Thursday of the month, um, Concom and CPC both meet at seven, you know, and Concom meets in this room, but the downstairs room should be available.
It's just a long day for me, cause I'm on conservation though.
We could do a workshop down there.
Oh, they're on conservation.
Yeah, I guess I could, I could do that one, or I'll do six and then I'll just stay until midnight.
Oh, and sick.
What is it?
Oh, and sick.
They'll see me. Excuse me.
We could actually meet in the conference room downstairs.
For a workshop?
Yeah, and then I'll just come upstairs.
I'm pulling up the town meeting calendar to see.
The only night for me that's not really good is Tuesday.
Thursday's best for me, but...
Mondays I can kind of do. It's a really hard month for me.
Well, we're not holding him up, which is a good thing. He's open, so it's not like it, there's a imminent...
Alright, twenty-seventh or twenty-eighth I can do.
When is he gonna open up? This week? Nice.
It looks like there's a lot of workshops on the agenda and it looks like Matt's pretty busy, which is, I mean, it's summer, right?
Yeah, summer, summer's insane for me, so.
Does it make sense to get it started, maybe with a, a member or two, just asking? And then not exclude anything, just put it to the side and say, hey, we think this does need to be included and then Matt can review it?
Yeah, cause the plan is just to make a recommend, you know, to go to an actual meeting where we advertise it.
I'm not trying to exclude you, but, you know, cause there's a lot of workshops.
Prior to or...
Yeah, I mean, we all go through it, make our recommendations, deletions, additions.
Was it, was it Thursday you're looking at? This, um, the fifteenth?
It didn't throw out a date, but...
You do the fifteenth out, for the most part, I'll be around the fifteenth.
Yeah, so it's at six. Now, if it's an hour, I'll just come upstairs later on.
Yeah, that was a date thrown out, um...
An hour good for one time for us?
Cause the twenty-second's out, the next date that would probably be available is the twenty-ninth.
Right.
I'll bring the whip.
And everybody read the regs obviously ahead of time.
I don't, I don't think the body out's gonna take too long anyway, so.
No, I mean, because of what we're copying it from and we took the one bit from Rainham about the two years of, uh...
Yeah, we changed that. That, that makes sense.
That was the, the only change I've made to the drafts that you guys are gonna have and I think...
Can you send that draft? I've been just using...
I won't do it till Monday, but yeah, I can send it out to everybody, so.
You got septic regulations, you wanna do a workshop too?
Well, yeah, that's, yeah, we've been kicking that around for a little while. There's no urgency to that, so.
I, I, I don't see, do the fifteenth and we'll just plan an hour, whatever we get through, we get through and after that...
And do you wanna aim for the six o'clock? Okay.
What, what time were you thinking?
No, I just didn't know if you wanted to try and do like five and then, you know, be done by six, go home and eat or whatever and come back for seven or something. I mean, you're the only one that's got a conflict that night, so.
I feel, I'm here, I'm just gonna just go upstairs.
Okay.
We'll probably order pizza, we'll give you some...
Nice. I'm gonna hold you to that.
I was hoping somebody said pizza.
So, where he's trying to open this week, should I go add the, um, signatures on here so you guys can sign tonight and...
That's up to the board.
Yeah, that's fine.
Well, Tom can. If it's just one...
Nah, I'd put all three, that's fine.
I think we were talking the new, or it's a new establishment. It should be for...
Yeah, we can all sign.
Okay, I'll do that quick.
And then obviously, we gotta do an inspection before he opens.
Yes.
I've never done a tattoo pile before. Would one of you two be able to accompany?
I just did one last week.
What day, what day is he gonna open?
Well, let's find out what day he wants and then we can figure which one, every one he is, is available and we can do it early in the morning or at the end of the day or whatever. We'll figure it out.
Okay.
Cause right now, he hasn't asked for an inspection yet.
How was it, you know?
Uh, ten to eight, I think.
Oh, so you're doing the evening, early evening?
So again, once we know when he's ready, then we'll figure it out, so.
He knows, he knows what he's got to, so it'll be alright.
See, I'm gonna go ahead and...
Yeah, he's been doing this a long time.
Oh, he is, thirteen years, you said, right?
It's a class act. I hope he stays in Dayton.
Nice.
Um, he asked me where, um, located?
I'm sorry?
Where was located?
Uh, nineteen oh one County Street.
So, um, the item on the agenda is scheduling the workshop, so can we get a motion or something?
Make a motion to schedule for the fifteenth.
Second.
As August fifteenth?
Uh, July.
July. Next Thursday.
At six PM?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, motion made in second. Schedule the, uh, body out workshop on July fifteenth. Alls, any further discussion? Seeing none or a favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, motion carries. You wanna table septic regulations for now?
I, I, I think I'd, I mean, if we get through the body out in fifteen minutes, why not just start talking about that? So, I, I propose that, uh, you know, we, we do it on the fifteenth as well as time permits.
Yeah.
Then we'll go from there.
And even if we started our next meeting an, an hour early as well, whatever, whatever, we don't finish.
Yeah, once we get started, then we can just keep going with it, so.
Well, that was the point I was trying to make, just if you're in the groove, just try and get it done.
Keep going and...
Yep.
So, is that a motion?
Okay, so we'll also schedule...
Yes.
Is there a motion to schedule septic regulations workshop on the July fifteenth also?
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Alls opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. COVID nineteen updates.
Uh, we are continuing to send our weekly, uh, updates to the board of selectmen. We haven't had a case now and through, we had one case last week, but the two weeks before that or three weeks before that was zero cases. The number of people getting vaccinated in Dayton is kind of tailed off. We're at forty-nine percent vaccinated, uh, fully in Dayton, so. That's that. So, we're back now to contact tracing. We're at, the caseload now is such that I believe our public health nurse can go back to doing the contact tracing and, and we've had her take care of the last couple of cases and as long as the board's amenable to that, we're gonna continue to have her do what she was doing before. It got so overwhelming that she couldn't handle it. So, uh, other than that, events are starting up again, uh, all over the place and of course, kids aren't vaccinated and stuff, so there's different rules going on with some of that, but, um...
What, what's her budget line item?
Uh, I don't have it, but I feel like it's a few thousand dollars.
Just kinda monitor that, cause if she's gonna do a bunch of contact tracing, besides just the normal tick stuff.
Right, but one case a month, right, is manageable, but if we get into, we'll say, the, uh, the variation, if that hits us in the fall, the board may want Roz and I to do it again, so. But for now, I think it's manageable for her to maintain it, but yeah, there, there's like six other cases of other stuff she's following right now, so.
Yeah, definitely, the ticks and stuff.
Yeah, yes.
I have a question, and I know everybody is COVID-whipped, so I apologize for asking this, but I'm wondering if there's any state, uh, correspondence regarding, um, any discussion about whether COVID is gonna, um,
Come back.
flare up, because I've noticed in my travels, especially in public spaces, there are a lot of people wearing masks again. So, I can only attribute that to the fact that people are concerned about the virus making its rounds again. Is that?
New variant is.
So, Delta variant?
I'm not on social media. I live under a small rock, so I just want.
The new variant, that's now the predominant variant in the US, the Delta variant, it's more contagious, um, than prior variants. There is protection with the vaccine from it. I don't think it's as much as the other variants, but there is still protection. Of course, the main goal of the vaccine is to prevent death or serious illness, which that it's still effective. However, people are still getting sick. You get sick, you're gonna continue to transmit, so, um, that's certainly a, a big issue. Looking how things were last fall trending into Thanksgiving and then the holidays through January, um, if things don't change, I wouldn't be surprised if things start to look like that again. But, we got a few months to go, so time will tell. Wish I had a crystal ball, but I, I have seen, you know, people are definitely still wearing masks and, um, you know, I, I certainly encourage it, you know, especially if you haven't been vaccinated, you're still supposed to wear a mask and.
It depends where I go. There's been times where I've gone to a pretty crowded place. I'm like, I just put it on in case, but.
Yeah.
Besides that, it's just everybody, I, I've hardly seen anybody now with masks.
Yeah, I actually noticed it recently in the last couple of days that I've noticed a lot of people wearing masks and I just, um, I, I, as I said, I'm not on social media. I don't really watch the news that much. So, I was just wondering if there was anything from the Department of Public Health.
No, I think when they, when they rescinded the state of emergency on June fifteenth, everything just, even our conference calls now on Tuesdays, there's almost no COVID-related information. Um, it just seems like it just disappeared.
They did talk about the, the, the variant a little bit, but.
They don't do the Friday call no more, do they?
Nope, they canceled the Friday calls.
Fridays are gone. But they do seem to say the numbers here in Massachusetts aren't there yet for the, the variant, but other states, they are starting to see huge flare-ups, so once we have a flare-up, that's when I think they'll talk about it some more.
We're, we're a highly vaccinated state compared to areas that it is flaring up, so that could be helping, but time, time will tell.
But the variants, it, the, excuse me, the vaccine is not gonna stop the spread of the disease.
Correct, unless every single person were to be vaccinated.
It's kinda like the flu, I guess. I mean, the flu can kill you, too, if you, if you haven't taken the necessary steps to, you know, depending on your health. But if you don't get vaccinated and you don't take precautions, you know, um.
It's like Lyme disease.
Yeah.
I, I, I definitely see COVID being something similar to the flu in that it's gonna be more seasonal. Uh, you know, if you look at last summer, before we even had a vaccine, the numbers were very low, um, they're lower now than they were then, but still. Uh, and then as things were closed up and people were more in indoor environments, you know, numbers started going up. I, and that's, it's the same way with the flu. That's why you really don't see, you know, very rarely you'll see a summer flu, if you will. Um, but in the winter, when people are together, flu is highly contagious. It's a communicable disease, just like COVID is, um, you know, you, you get those spikes. I'm sure if we treated the flu the same way that we treated COVID with contact tracing, things like that, it would probably prevent a lot of flu cases every year. Um, certainly, the idea that the contact tracing was to identify people, get them quarantined, stop that spread and overwhelm in the hospitals and the morgues and such. But I, I, I see it trending more towards something similar like the flu and how it's treated on, on a DPH end of things.
I agree with you, and I said that in our pandemic meetings early on, that I felt that this was here to stay as a human race and we were gonna deal with it similarly to the flu. Albeit, you know, obviously, um, you know, people have lost lives, so we wanna take it seriously, but we're gonna have to learn how to coexist with, uh, with the virus, so, okay, thanks.
I think I first see a, uh, you, I believe you said an annual vaccination, also same we have with the flu, I think.
I mean, as of right now, I think Tuesday, they might have mentioned it. Someone had asked if there were any thoughts on a booster, and as of right now, there is.
Nothing.
Discussion, but nothing, no, you know, it's not, as of yet, going to, going to be required. Time will tell with that. Uh, I believe it was Moderna was looking into incorporating some type of booster with their annual flu vaccine, um, which would ultimately also alter the, the flu vaccine as well, whether it would be more effective or not, I don't know, but that's what the scientists, a whole lot smarter than myself, could be to do, so, but.
To me, it showed me that society was taking it seriously, because if you're telling me now that there was some hype about a variant and spreading, the people that I saw wearing masks are obviously taking the precautions to try to stop or slow the spread, so.
Definitely, yeah.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you for your input. And moving on to, uh, five E, if I may comment on five E and five F, I'll make a suggestion. Um, we did discuss both these things during the executive session we had about on the contract and job descriptions. Instead of spinning our wheels and trying to come up with variations and wage levels and so forth and so on, I've requested that, and this is just what I've done. You can change that if you like, that we meet with the town administrator and we ask him what he would be re.
Hold on. Is Ken in the room?
Oh, I don't know.
Is he here, or do we have to let him in?
No. Ken, are you there?
Maybe you are now.
Not to interrupt you, but obviously, somebody came in.
Technology.
Tom, when you said we meet, did you mean board?
I wanna do a red pen.
Oh, no.
I gotta, I gotta.
My black?
Yeah.
Yeah, black's better. Patrick used to tell me you should use black. I love it. No longer there, right? Okay, so anyway.
Enough.
I'd like to propose that, uh, until such time, we meet with the TA and find out what he is going to be open to and receptive as far as job description inclusions, whether he wants to, as we know, you do stormwater and, uh, health agent. Uh, we're gonna make it one position with duties and responsibilities for both, are we gonna separate it? Uh, my understanding is, when I spoke with the TA before, that he would prefer to have another system in place other than employee contracts. So, until such time, I think, and I'm trying to schedule a meeting, we're on Monday morning, you and I. So, I think until such time, we find out what exactly they're gonna be open and receptive to as far as uh, inclusions or deletions in a job description or a employee contract. Uh, we're spinning our wheels, so we'll find out what they're gonna be looking for and what they would be willing to negotiate, so. I, I would recommend we table E and F, but that's up to the remainder of the board.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to table E and F. Um, again, like you said, not only the contract piece, but also the job description, the stormwater bit.
I agree. I'll second that motion.
Motion made second and table items five E, five F. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. To table five E and five F. Any public input? Cable? No. Anybody else on the board or members? No. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of June third and June ninth, twenty twenty-one?
So moved.
Um, I can only approve the ninth. I, I believe on the third, I left early.
Okay. I, uh, I'll step down and, well, let's do them separate then. Is, is there a motion to approve the minutes of June third, twenty twenty-one?
So moved.
I'll step down second. All in favor?
Aye.
All oppose? Motion carries. Motion to accept the minutes of June ninth, twenty twenty-one.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made second. It all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Anything else?
Was there an executive session one?
We haven't done those minutes yet.
Seeing nothing else? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Second. Motion made in second to adjourn. Any further discussion? Seeing none or in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you, cable. Thank you, members.